I hereby call the December Haywood County Board of Education meeting to order. At this time, I would like to ask Mr. Jimmy Rogers if he would lead us in our invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Board members, please rise.
Let us pray. Congress, thou be Father, we're so thankful, especially for this time of year, season of giving, season that you have given us a gift. And Lord, we pray that you guide and direct us as we accept these things that you have given to us and that we may be able to give to others. Lord, one thing that we can give the best education possible to the children of this county, we thank you for the accomplishments that we have done so far and that these teachers and this staff so diligently work hard every day to teach our children and to help our children have the best education possible. We pray that this board makes the best decisions and give the tools that these teachers need to lead and to direct and to see the children grow. And Lord, as we can see here tonight, all the accomplishments of these students, it's wonderful, Lord, and we thank you that we have one of the best school systems in this state and in this country. We thank you for the leadership of all, and we pray, Lord, that you guide and direct us in everything that we do to help us make the best decisions possible, to be the greatest school system. And guide and direct us and our families, be with each and every one of us through this holiday season. And Lord, thank you for all that you've done for us, and thank you for all that you've given us. All these things, we ask in thy precious name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. Thank you, Mr. Rogers. I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight on this nasty, cold, wet night. Hopefully, the snow's gonna hold off. I know the kids probably here are probably got their fingers crossed it is gonna snow, but hopefully it'll hold off for us. Wish everyone a very happy holiday season and hope you got your Christmas shopping done or getting ready to get started on it. Chairman Francis could not be with us tonight. He was called out of town for work, so I wish him safe travels, and I'm filling in for him tonight. So as far as the announcements go, we have, the next board meeting will be Monday, January 13th, here in the Education Center at seven o'clock. The next meeting would be, or we also have a work session coming up on Monday, December 16th, at six o'clock here at the EC Center. That's all the announcements I have. Does anybody else have any other announcements? I did hear one thing. I do wanna send our condolences to the Insley family on the loss of Barbara Insley. Neil used to be, I believe, a former board member, so we wanna send our condolences to their family. Okay. At this time, we are, we have, do we have any agenda adjustments we need to add to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, we need to add several items from building grounds.
Okay. We will add building grounds to, let's say, to 21A. After, after we do 21, we'll, we'll add the building and grounds. Anything from finance? Okay. Then we need to go ahead and approve the December 10th board agenda with the amendments made. Do I hear a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
No, Mr. Chair.
We have a motion by Mr. Rogers to approve tonight's agenda. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Barrett. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. All right. Now, we get to recognize some of the accomplishments for, from our school system. So I am going to call, or actually, before the recognition, we're gonna do the audit. So we have the 2018-19 audit from Anderson Smith &amp; White.
Good evening, Chairman Francis. We wish you the board, Dr. Nolte, Dr. Putnam, Ms. Barker, Dr. Snathers, Mr. Hans. We have Andy Deal with us this evening with Anderson Smith &amp; White.
And he is coming to present the board's 2019 financial statements.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Andy Deal. I work for the accounting firm Anderson Smith &amp; White, and like Angie said, I'm here to present the audited financial statements. I'm just gonna give a brief summary of the statements. If anybody has any questions along the way, feel free to stop me and we'll get them answered. We'll start on page one. If you flip to page one of the financial statements, this is the first audited opinion in the financial statements. Basically, these financial statements have four audited opinions. They are all unmodified opinions, which, in another way to say that, they are all clean reports. An unmodified opinion is the cleanest report you can have. The reason it's called unmodified, that means we did not note anything in our audit that would require us to modify our audited opinion. Again, I said there's four audited opinions. This is the first one. This is the opinion on the financial statements, and if the financial statements are in accordance with GAAP. We'll talk about the other three audited opinions later. They all relate to the compliance portion of the audit. Next, if you flip over to page 12. So page 12 is where the numbers part of the financial statements begin. It's actually where the financial statements start. On pages 12 and 13, these are what we refer to as government-wide financial statements. It has all the funds of the district. So that, that's why it's called government-wide. For a school district, these statements aren't as important for a school district as, these statements have long-term capital assets, like fixed assets. They have your pension liabilities. And for a school, a school district, you know, you're not gonna use these statements to really manage the board and make decisions. For example, you know, I said they have fixed assets. That would be like a, like a elementary school, and you're not gonna sell an elementary school to finance the operations of the board. So that's why we say these aren't as important as the statements we'll discuss next. Next, if you flip over to page 14. 14, this is where the fund financial statements begin. These next two statements we discuss are very important to a school district. On page 14, we have the balance sheet for the governmental funds. The balance sheet is basically a snapshot of the financial condition of the board as of June 30th, 2019. This statement's gonna tell you how much cash you have on hand. It's gonna tell you, you know, what your account's payable balance is as of June 30th of 2019. One number I wanna point out on here, if you look at the first column, that's the general fund. The last number on the general fund shows your, or the second to last number, excuse me, shows your total fund balance. And you can see that, that's about 3.3 million for total fund balance in the general fund as of June 30th, 19. If you flip to the next page, page 15, this statement is called the Statement of Revenues, Expenditures, and Changes in Fund Balance for the Governmental Funds. You could also call this a P and L or an income statement for the governmental funds. This is a very important statement to a school district. It's gonna show you all your revenues and your expenditures for your governmental funds. One thing I wanna highlight here, if you look at the general fund again, if you look at the third number from the bottom, it shows you your net change in general fund balance, and the general fund reported a net decrease of $700,000. So you, one way you could say that is the general fund experienced a net loss of $700,000. And, you know, that's pretty much par for the course. We audit several districts throughout the state, and what we're seeing is the general fund is losing money just due to problems that school districts are facing financially, which we'll go over those later in the presentation. If you flip to page 17, page 17, what these are, these are the budget-to-actual statements. So it's gonna give you the same numbers as the previous statements, except it's gonna add columns for the budgeted numbers so you can compare, you know, budget to actual numbers. Next, if you flip to page 21. On 21, this is where the business-type activities, the financial statements for the business-type activities begin. There, you know, we talked about governmental funds before. These are called business types, business-type funds, and Haywood County Schools has one business-type funds, one business-type fund, which is the School Food Service Fund. The rules for business-type funds are different than governmental funds, therefore, their statements are in a little different format, and they're in a different spot. But again, this is the statement of net position for the School Food Service Fund here on page 21. And again, it's gonna give you a snapshot of the financial condition of the School Food Service Fund. It's gonna tell you how much cash you have and so on. If you flip to the next page, this would be the income statement for the School Food Service Fund. It's gonna show you your revenue and your, your revenues and your expenses for, for the School Food Service Fund. And one number I wanna highlight, third number for the, third number from the bottom, this is the change in net position for the School Food Service Fund, and it lost about $12,000 for FY19. And again, that's, that's normally what we see across the state, is the School Food Service Funds are experiencing a decrease in fund balance or net position, mainly due to just increased employment cost and decreased participation. The, you know, the fewer students who eat, it's gonna be harder for them to do well financially. Next, if you flip to page 27. On page 27, this is where the, the notes to the financial statements begin. What this is, this is a lot of detailed disclosures about accounting rules and certain financial statement line items. And unless somebody has any specific questions, I'm, I'm not gonna spend any time here, but just wanted to kinda tell you that, you know, that's basically what this section is. Next, if you flip to page 65. Page 65 is where the compliance portion of the audit begins. One more page. Again, like I said before, there are three audited opinions for compliance. We're pleased to report that they're all unmodified opinions, which is, you know, that's the cleanest opinion you could have. The first one here, this is the compliance opinion on internal control over financial reporting and compliance. And then again, it is an unmodified report or unmodified opinion. Next, if you flip to page 67. This is the second compliance opinion, and this is the report on compliance with the requirements applicable to each major federal program. So, you know, all your federal programs have, you know, different requirements, and this is our report on the district's compliance with their major federal programs. If you flip to page 69, this is the last audited opinion, and it's same as the federal one, except instead of federal programs, it's for your state programs. So this is our opinion on the major state programs, and again, it's an unmodified opinion. The next thing I wanna talk about is on page 75. Page 75, it's gonna look like a blank page there, but that's just, you know, there's federal audit requirements that give us the format that we have to report these items in. But here on page 75, it's, it's a pretty important page. It's titled the Summary Schedule of Prior Audit Findings. So basically, when we do an audit, if there was an audit finding in the prior year, we have to do additional follow-up testing to make sure that finding has been corrected. So in the FY18 audit, we had a find, a finding due to a teacher teaching outside of their area of certification, so therefore, we have to perform extra testing just to kinda make sure that's been corrected, and we're pleased to report that it has been corrected, and we didn't note any teachers teaching outside of their area of certification, which is a positive. The next thing I wanna go over is our required communications letter. If y'all have, do y'all have a copy of the letter? If you don't, it's okay. Okay.
That's on my attachments.
If you look, there's only one paragraph, really one sentence I wanna go over here in this letter, but this letter is exactly how it sounds. This is communications that us as auditors are required to have with the board due to auditing standards. But if you look at the last paragraph, it's entitled "Difficulties Encountered in Performing the Audit." And it basically says, "We didn't encounter any difficulties in completing the audit." When we do an audit, we ask a ton of questions. We ask for a ton of documents to be pulled, and, you know, not just of the finance department, you know, basically district, district-wide. And, you know, we're pleased to report, if we asked a question, we got a, a straight answer quickly. It was not a vague answer. If we asked for documentation, it was provided quickly. So we just always like to communicate that to the board because basically, you know, the quicker we, we get items to us, the better audit we can do. You know, we're just more efficient and more effective at performing our audit when we don't have any difficulties basically getting the audit done. So just wanted to highlight that. The last thing, the last thing I wanna go over, you guys don't have a copy of this, but I'll just kinda pass them out. But it's basically gonna highlight the retirement, the retirement cost for the school district for the past five years, and it basically highlights a problem that all school districts in the state are experiencing.
I'm gonna give one to Dr. Nolte, too.
So like I said, this is your retirement contributions for the last five years, and I'll just, I won't spend a lot of time here, but like I said, I think this is, it's kind of a good little snapshot of what school districts are facing throughout the state. I'll go through the columns here. So the far-left column, that's obviously your years. The next one is your pension contributions. These are gonna be the contributions that Haywood County Schools makes to the pension fund. And I, one thing I wanna highlight that, you know, these are state-mandated. Haywood County Schools has little to no control over this. This, you know, Raleigh says you gotta pay this, and the district has to pay it. The next one is your post-employment healthcare contributions. Keep in mind, same thing, state-mandated. And keep in mind, this is post-employment healthcare. This is not your current health insurance. And then you've got a total there, and if you look at your far-right column, you've got your covered employees. So if you look from, if you look at your covered employees from 2015 to 2019, it's decreasing. Your number of employees are decreasing. However, when you look at your retirement cost, you know, they're going up almost $2 million over a five-year span. They went from 5.9 million to 7.8 million. So, you know, your, your number of employees is going down, but your costs are kinda going through the roof. And again, you know, the, the district has no control over this, and, and this is, like I said before, we're seeing the fund balance in the general fund decrease. This is a big reason why. It's not the only reason why, but it's one of the major players. Another thing I wanna mention here, again, these are state-mandated contributions. One thing I wanna highlight, this does not only affect state funds. This affects all your funds. So for example, like your federally-funded employees, just because Raleigh increased the retirement contribution rate, that doesn't mean that your federal grants are gonna say, "Oh, North Carolina increased their retirement contribution rates. We're gonna give them more federal money." No, you're still getting the same federal money, maybe even less federal money. So, you know, in, in the same way with raises. Like if, if Raleigh, you know, passes a raise for, you know, certain teachers in the district, you know, the federal government, they, they don't care about that. You know, you're gonna get your same federal allotment for Title I or for EC or what have you. So this is just something we've been sharing with boards, you know, throughout the state, just because it kinda highlights while, while you're having these, you know, financial difficulties that you didn't have, you know, maybe five, 10 years ago. But that's all I have, you know, for the presentation. If anybody has any questions, please let me know.
Thank you very much for your synopsis of the audit. It's, it's exciting that we got another good review, and I appreciate that. And this information's very helpful to sort of see how our spending is increasing each year and how we're having to move some of that money around. Does any of the board members have any questions about the audit this time? Comments? Well, again, thank you for being here, and thank you for reviewing. Dr. Nolte, would you have anything to add?
Just the spin-down and loss of $700,000 is, you all know, through our work, we made a commitment with the county commissioners to spend some of our fund balance, and we've done that in addition to the increased cost. The other thing I wanted to mention is, we would like the board to consider accepting the audit report, approving the, or accepting the audit report. Thank you.
If you don't mind, what were the, what some of the factors causing that increase? Less than $4 million going up some?
Yeah, I mean, it's basically just, you know, Raleigh, the state legislature, they decide how much they wanna fund the pension.
It's health, it's health insurance matching.
Health insurance.
It's health insur, it, it's health insurance matching.
Retirement, the retirement rate's going up as well.
We start with a little over $6,000 per employee in cost, just with looking at health insurance. And then, you know, we pay their salary and do matching social security and all those things on top of it.
And the retirement rate is increasing. You, you'll see that we're paying close to 20% matching retirement right now, but that doesn't go toward retirement accounts. Built into that match, matching retirement rate, we're paying close to 7% of that goes to pay retiree health insurance. So as those healthcare costs go up, you're always gonna see that retirement rate go up because so much of that is built in to pay for retired employees' health insurance.
So, and the pension contribution, a lot of specific, $3,671, $5,189, is that because it, that's related to the health, health cost too?
No, that, that would, that would strictly be your pension.
Is that, what some factors causing that? Is that just?
Well, honestly, if, if, if the market goes down, you're gonna have to pay more in. If the market does better, you're gonna have to pay less in. You basically have actuaries that estimate, okay, how much is it gonna cost to fund these pension payments? And like I said, you know, there, there can be several factors. If, if people live longer, like if there's an increase in the, I can't remember the exact term, but basically, if folks are living longer, that increases the cost. So, you know, there, there's several factors, but basically what it boils down to is the actuaries say, "This is what your pension is gonna cost," and then Raleigh determines, okay, how much do we wanna fund it? Like, if, if they say it's gonna cost $100 million, do you wanna fund 100% of it? Do you wanna fund 80% of it? Raleigh makes that determination. And there's federal guidelines that say it has to be funded at, at a certain amount, like a minimum.
Thank you. I just thought that was just pretty fascinating, $3,671 for five years.
Let's hope that slows down a little bit.
Yeah. It's, I don't see it slowing down, but I mean, nobody can predict the future. But I think, too, the, the, like you were saying, the healthcare cost, that's increased again, you know, for next year. So, I mean, it, it just, yeah, it's, when are they gonna, there's gonna be a point, though, when people are hired where they're not gonna get those retirement healthcare benefits. Do you know, is it 2021?
I think they've withdrawn that.
Ah, okay.
They may not roll that back this time.
They threw that out.
Okay.
The reaction was pretty severe.
Again, thank you for being here. At this time, board, you've had a chance to look at the audit and also-
I make a motion we approve our audit as presented.
Motion has been made to approve the 2018-19 audit report.
Thank you.
Second by Dr. Rogers. So we have a first and a second. Any other discussion? There being none, let's vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Dr. Nolte.
Thank you. Mr. Francis, we would ask if you, as a board, might consider doing items 10 and 11 as those involve student recognitions. And we, if possible, would like to let them go home and do their homework and get a good night's sleep.
Yes, sir.
Should we have school tomorrow.
Are they all promised to do their homework?
They will.
That's, that's the only stipulation.
That's what we do.
If we let you go out now, you've got to do your homework.
That's what we do here.
All right. So at this time, we're gonna, we're gonna skip around the agenda just a little bit here. So at this time, will Ms. Wood come up and recognize the 2019 Christmas card winner?
Thank you, board. Yes, sir.
It's my pleasure to recognize our 2019 Christmas card contest winner, Adriana Ranelini. She's here?
Is she here? Adriana.
She's an 11th grader at Pisgah, and we have for her 25 cards, a framed, the framed print, and then a hundred-dollar check. So I'll make sure that we get that to Adriana. It's very pretty.
I wanna make sure everybody notices that the, the card is actually on the easel over here of what it's gonna look like, so. So I'm sorry that she couldn't be here, but let's give her a round of applause. Very talented girl that did that. Thank you. All right. Next on the agenda is Dr. Putnam with High School Athletic Recognitions.
Thank you, Vice Chairman and members of the board. It's my distinct honor to recognize some schools at this time. I'm gonna let Mr. Connor, the principal at Pisgah High School, come up for some special recognitions.
Mr. Francis, members of the board, Dr. Bill, Dr. Putnam, Ms. Barker, I just wanna recognize some of our fall athletes at Pisgah High School. We've had a wonderful sports season. Our athletic director, Mr. Crook, has actually had an FFA banquet tonight, so I stepped in and did some of the recognition for him. But I just wanna thank our coaches, our community, our parents with the support. It's amazing. It's a great place, and we appreciate everyone in Haywood County. First, I'd like to call up Coach Brett Chapel. He's the coach of the Bears. He's our football coach. We've had back-to-back conference champions. I know he probably won't talk about himself much, but he was recognized as the coach of the year in our conference. So we're super proud of Coach Chapel and his boys.
I'll jump in because he's not gonna talk about himself, but he is, Coach Chapel is the co-coach of the year. What was your record, Coach Chapel? Nine and three. Conference champions, both Forresty and JV, correct? And so we just wanna give him a round of applause and hand him his certificate first of all. of all.
I'm going to introduce some young men and talk about them, uh, briefly. I'll do the varsity guys first. The first one up I'm going to talk about, and I'm going to go by certificates, so you are going to have to shuffle around a little bit, Mr. Warner Mole. I'll bring Warner up. Warner played defensive end for us. Um, he's a junior, certainly excited about having him back next year. Uh, he was the one that spent a lot of time in the backfield on the opposing teams. If you had a chance to come and watch, uh, any of our games at home, uh, you got to hear Hello Darling go over the loudspeakers quite often when he was on the field. Uh, generally that happens when we have a sack or something like that. And certainly we're proud of him, great accomplishment, and one of our all-conference members. Mr. Travis Schuford is next. Travis is a senior for us. Uh, started off playing center early in his career, uh, made a move for us this year, moved to right guard. Uh, also our long snapper. Uh, we feel pretty good about him having the opportunity to move on, uh, to the next level and be a long snapper in college. Uh, excited about those opportunities. Hopefully we'll be hearing about something with those schools in the next couple of months. Mr. Travis Schuford. Mr. Keegan Hudson. Keegan is the best-looking one of the bunch. He would tell you the same thing. Uh, really good baseball player for us as well there at the high school. Uh, Keegan was a cornerback and wide receiver for us. Uh, he was, if I'm not mistaken, led our team in interceptions. Uh, all-conference member, uh, really big part of the success of our team, not just this year, but through his four years while he was here with us at Pisgah High School. Mr. Hunter Shaliday. Mr. Shaliday has got a, uh, unique path that he has taken with our program. He was a, uh, kid that's come a long ways, uh, had a devastating injury last year during our Tuscaloosa game, uh, dislocated an elbow, uh, got put out for the rest of the season, weren't sure he was going to be able to make it back. And not only did he make it back, he pitched a baseball game in the spring. Uh, so came back for us, uh, this year, a two-way starter for us, one of our captains as well, and, uh, phenomenal young man with a great family and certainly blessed to have had him on our football team. Mr. Hunter Shaliday. Mr. Tucker Locerson. There's not, there's not much that needs to be said, is there, Tucker? Walk the walk and talk the talk, don't you, brother? That's what we like. Uh, Tucker was a, uh, all-conference player for us, another one of our really good seniors. Uh, just, uh, certainly blessed to be a part of, uh, this program and have these young men come through and, uh, been a part of our program all four years. Uh, these seniors that are up here, uh, they finished, uh, their career, uh, at Pisgah High School, 37 and 7, um, three conference championships. Uh, so they will go out as one of the most decorated teams that we've had, uh, come through the high school. Certainly proud of them, and, uh, Tucker was a big piece of that as well. While I've got them up here, I'm going to bring up, uh, Coach Hannah, who is our JV head football coach. Come on, Coach Hannah. He didn't want to speak, but I'm going to make him. We are here also to recognize our JV team. Uh, we brought our four captains that are with us. We'll speak about them briefly and get them up here as well. Mr. Gabe Nussman is our first one. Gabe is a sophomore for us. These were the, and I probably should have prefaced this, these were the captains that were chosen by their teammates, uh, before we got started with the season. Uh, all sophomores did a really good job for us this year. Uh, they are conference champions for the third year in a row. Uh, Gabe was one of our instrumental players, uh, got hurt in a camp, uh, late in July, missed quite a few of the early part of the season, came back, uh, was playing really good football, and got hurt again, had surgery last week. And so hopefully we'll have him back in another couple of months and back with us lifting again. Bailey Stockton is our next one. It's up. Bailey, uh, does about everything for us, uh, wide receiver, tight end, linebacker. We even moved him to be a long snapper for us when we had some issues with that early in the season. So we found, uh, might have found Schuford's replacement up on varsity, maybe as a long snapper, but, uh, Bailey was a real big piece of the success that we had on our JV program. Certainly proud to have had him with us as well. And, uh, Mr. Bailey Stockton. Jackson Holland got a great story too about like Bailey's. He's done a lot of things for us. He's played wide receiver and played some running back, played some quarterback, started for us there, played some defensive back. Uh, he's done just about everything when it comes to playing on that football field for us. Very, uh, unselfish young man, uh, but a huge role in the success we had this year as well. I'm certainly proud to have had him, Jackson Holland. And the last gentleman we got, Ethan Mummerner. This young man has, uh, come such a long ways in our program. Uh, if we had somebody that I could say hard work pays off, he's one of them. He's, uh, done a tremendous job for us in the offseason, getting himself ready. Uh, certainly the successes that he had individually this year on our football team were a result of all of that hard work. Certainly proud to have had him and got two more good years with him, so we're excited about that. Mr. Ethan Mummerner. It's Jacob Hannah. Come on up, Coach Hannah. Glad to have this young man with us as well. He doesn't play anymore, even though he looks like it, but, uh, he's certainly a great coach for us as well. Uh, guys, just excited about our young men. It's always great to be able to brag on the accomplishments of those that are standing over there. Uh, such hard work goes into a lot of the stuff that we do, not only just the football programs, but all of our sports athletics we do in Haywood County, and so many long hours are spent. Uh, those guys can tell you a lot of stories of time in the weight room and time out on the track, running and all of those things, but, uh, certainly proud to be able to talk about them tonight. Thank you all for having us, and, uh, we appreciate it.
We invite parents to come up closer and get a picture. You may have noticed they had matching haircuts.
Next up is our men's soccer coach. He has some recognition for some of our athletes. He's our new guidance counselor at Pisgah High School and has done a great job, uh, with our soccer program. It's Mr. Rodney Alt.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good to be a Pisgah Bear. Uh, told the Booster Club last night, I feel really welcome at the school. It's been a great experience getting to know everybody. Um, here, um, Juan Rodriguez Ponse tonight. He was recognized by the coaches as all-conference and, uh, the Mountain Six Conference. Juan, I have to, I have to say, I didn't see any player play harder than this kid right here in our, in our conference play. Coaches recognize that. Um, he did a good job, captain, team leader. Um, we're losing several players off, uh, out of the senior class, uh, a very good class, a good group of boys to work with, and, um, Juan was representing the whole group, but, um, big team player battle on both sides of the ball for 80 minutes almost every night. And that's, that's grueling, and we played some tough competition, um, but held up strong.
Next up for Pisgah High School, um, is our volleyball team. Our coach Simmons was not able to make it tonight. He sends his apologies for that. Heidi Morgan, our assistant athletic director, will step in and say a few words about our volleyball team.
Good evening. I would like to recognize, um, Carter Gibson for all-conference. Not only did Carter make all-conference for this season, but she also did the last two seasons. Carter is an exceptional hard worker, a dedicated student before everything. She has a 4.25 GPA. Um, and a few of her stats that I would like to recognize is she, um, on the total for her career is 932 kills, 104 aces, and 969 digs. So, um, she is truly going to be missed.
Next up, waiting patiently with our coach is our ladies tennis team. Um, Coach Shepherd has done a wonderful job at sta- establishing our ladies tennis program. We have had a lot of girls to come out. We, we kind of had a JV team that traveled around, which is a first in Pisgah High School history, uh, but I'd like to introduce Harold Shepherd.
School board members, uh, Dr. Nolte, Dr. Putnam, Ms. Barker, thank you all for having us. Uh, I'd like to thank you for recognizing our 2019 tennis team, all-conference, um, people. Uh, this group of seniors has, uh, had a very successful run since they've been at Pisgah High School. Uh, they're ranking in the top percentage of the state in GPA. Uh, they've won one conference championship since they've been here and been runners-up three times. We've had regional and state playoff appearances, and we have had a variety of, uh, conference tournament appearances. Um, so at this time, I'd like to recognize the following players, Mayana Norris, and Ivy McClure. I would like to note that Karama Hafi was also an all-conference player, but she was unable to attend because she is a manager for wrestling. So she's out doing other things right now.
Next up for recognition is our ladies golf team and their coach- Ms. Kristy Sarles, who is in her first year of coaching our ladies golf team, and she did an excellent job with them. Uh, if they would come forward.
Hi, thank you all this evening. I would like to present to you Haley Gibson. She is my senior. We had five members on the team. She was my senior. She's been with the golf program all four years, has made regionals three of those four years, has been all-conference the last two years. Wonderful golfer, was an excellent leader as well on there with our younger ones, working with them. So she was amazing. Congratulations, Haley.
who does a great job with our cross-country teams, along with Ms. Stephanie Kirkin Dahl. If they would please come forward.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I'm Kelsey Pinkston. Um, as one of Pisgah's cross-country coaches, I just want to say how proud I am of Jake Moore for his four years of dedication to Pisgah High School's cross-country team. He has been such a strong leader for us, and we're really going to miss him. Um, of his four years, he went to state twice, and this year he was all-conference.
She was just behind all the football players, so we can't see. So again, I want to congratulate Adriana for her Christmas card. So thank you with your framed print, and you get a hundred dollar check, and then you've got 25 cards in here.
I just want to say I appreciate all the support that our school board gives us, also our central office staff. We thank you very much at Pisgah High School. Have a good evening.
Go Bears! Suck up. Oh, hot mic, hot mic, hot mic. I am certainly glad it's a, a friendly rivalry. Next, it's, uh, my honor to have, uh, Coach Baloo, athletic director, Coach Michael Baloo come forward to recognize, uh, some special athletes at Tuscaloosa High School.
Dr. Nolte, Dr. Putnam, Ms. Barker, members of the board, thank you on behalf of Tuscaloosa High School for having us out. It's always a good thing to be recognized, so we appreciate the, being recognized. It's always a good thing to be recognized and we appreciate the being recognized. We've got several uh, all-conference, they're not all here tonight. We've got a basketball game and a wrestling match, so several of our athletes are away from us. I'll go ahead and call their names just so they can be recognized. For football, we have John Smart. We have Coleman Bryson. We have Gavin Tannerhill, who got first in the NEO Saturday by the way. We have Juan Sanchez and we have Drew Gilland. That is our football. And for soccer, I'm going to have Coach Ian Meeks come forward and talk about his soccer players.
Thank you, the board, Mr. Nolte and Dr. Putnam. Wanted to say for our team this year, we definitely had a extreme change from last year. We went from two wins last year to 10, 10 wins. So it's a significant difference and these three gentlemen definitely played a huge role in that for us. Um, first up for all-conference was Martine Tosh. He had, I think approximately nine goals, had about 10 assists and led our team in points uh, for the year. Uh, he also made all-region, so, Martine Tosh.
He was one of our strong defensive stalwarts on the team and he actually probably led our team in goals on corner kicks. Uh, him and Martine hooked up a lot for a lot of our goals when we were on the other side of the field. Uh, he also scored several free kicks for us and he also made the all-region team. And last but certainly not least, Michael McBry was our goalkeeper this year. Um, last year, some of you may know, we had Sterling Thomas who set a school record for saves. That no longer is there. Mikey shattered that record this year. He actually had 30 saves against Charlotte Catholic in the playoffs and totaled 255 saves on the season. Um, the previous record was 222. So he, he pretty much showed up big this year, um, in big games. Uh, held us to a shutout in the first half against A.C. Reynolds, um, in one of our games and he also made all-region this year as well.
She's coaching a basketball game over at North Henderson tonight, so I'm going to do volleyball. Uh, the first one is, is also playing basketball. That's Grace Glance. And then we do have Emma Johnson with us here tonight and um, I will have to say that Emma just informed me, I knew this, she, but she just brought it back to my attention, that she will graduate having never lost a Pisgah, uh, all four years under. So I'm going to introduce Coach Dennis Koschus to come talk about golf.
Dr. Nolte, Dr. Putnam, Ms. Parker, uh, members of the board. Um, just the accomplishments that Maddie had made this year, Maddie Hudson had made this year were in and of themselves pretty spectacular. Um, being named um, uh, all-conference for the Western Mountain Athletic Conference. Um, and then going to uh, the regionals, qualifying for the regionals and then also qualifying for the state tournament. Uh, that's a pretty amazing feat, but um, uh, I definitely have to say that that feat is uh, even more amazing, the fact that Tuscola had not had a team in nine years, so Maddie as a senior coming in did not have the benefits and the privilege of three additional years to do this. So, the accomplishments she made this year, um, were pretty amazing since her last real competition was in middle school. So, um, uh, it, it says a lot for not only her um, natural athletical ability, but her drive um, to be the best that she can be. Um, with Maddie, we've now established a foundation for women's golf, again at Tuscola, which we're very, very happy about and very proud. And uh, for Maddie, we're really looking forward to see where she lands collegiately uh, as a golfer as well. So, uh, Maddie, very good job this year.
I want to make a couple comments while uh, parents and Kim gets a picture. I had the privilege of playing in the inaugural golf fundraiser for our schools and uh, and so we had a rain delay and so everybody gathered at the clubhouse and it was one of those points, Ryder Cup things where you win a point for your team or not. And the guy, these old guys like me kept, uh, kept saying, um, "That girl from Tuscola, right down the middle." Every single time. And then we had a long drive, uh, competition coming down to 18th green and I'm not a great golfer, but I had the long drive and there were two teams behind me. So Maddie comes through next, my long drive is gone. So anyway, great kid. Thank you, Maddie.
Uh, once again, board members and central office staff, thanks for having us out. We appreciate being recognized and Merry Christmas.
Alright, at this time, we'll jump back to the item number eight on our agenda, the finance department recognition by Dr. Nolte.
It's a good problem when you have all these people doing good things. We have some adults to recognize now, uh, having recognized a number of students. Uh, at this time, I'd like to tell you about a recognition for our finance department. Uh, each year, the State Board of Education recognizes school districts for excellence in management of state public funds. You heard the audit report and how clean that report was. These recognitions are determined by the school business scoring card through the school business office and school systems receive scores in the following areas. Zero out, which means that your, uh, your orders and your expenditures um, come as close as possible to matching and zeroing out. Overspending PRCs, finance, you, those of you who've served on finance, you know that a PRC is a purpose code and it's hard to get it to the penny when you're spending it during the year. Uh, and so not, not overspending or underspending different budget codes. Uh, overdraw and withdraw months of employment categories, you know, we get months of employment for different employees and so our finance department is constantly moving people during the year where we get months of employment where people retire or resign or move. Uh, the salary audit expectations for the fiscal year are, um, um, excuse me, the salary audit exceptions for the year are also measured as well as, as well as um, any invalid codes. And so I am proud to announce that the Haywood County Schools Finance Department has received this uh, recognition from the state uh, for their abilities to manage all of these items and they have done that consecutively since 2012, which is pretty cool. If I could have you folks come forward, I'll uh... Come over here, Ms. Angie. She's been hard to manage since she announced her... What I would like to do is give Ms. Angie the plaque for the school system. If you'll give it back to me later, we'll display it in a prominent location.
Take it with you.
Not in your den, no. No, that one's for us and then I have one in here hopefully for you.
Don't listen to him.
Amanda Robinson, uh, she is outstanding. Uh, she tells me she's leaving, but we love her anyway and so we want to present you with this certificate achievement, uh, in helping the school system get this recognition. You're so welcome. Tina Nolan, who recently left us, but we'll get the certificate to her. Uh, we, we love her too, even though she left us. Jennifer Welch, was Jennifer able?
Sick child.
As a sick child, Jennifer takes care of accounts payable. You know, she's the lady that writes the check on Thursdays if we have to pay someone. Angie Gardiner. Oh, finance director. She wants to talk, I don't know. And Nathan Haas, was Nathan able to make it? They're doing things with their children. You may say something. Keep it brief. Yeah, be nice.
Take as long as you want.
I did want to say, uh, in 2011, Bob Phillips was our finance director and he dug up one of those certificates from 2008 and Ms. Robinson, Ms. Nolan, at that time Brenda Mills and myself were in that department and Mr. Phillips said, "I want to win one of these before I leave." And so we didn't have a clue what it was or how you won one, but we started digging, researched and found out and we won it that year for the 2011, 2012 year and we have won it every year since then. And what I think, what I'm so proud of is that in that timeframe, you've had two finance officers, three assistant finance officers, four AP clerks and four payroll clerks, for five, a five-member department. So you've had that much turnover, turnover since 2012 and every, with every group, we've committed to be, to do our very best. Even though our jobs are boring, I saw y'all's eyes glazing over with the auditor. I was so excited, my heart was pounding. I was so excited, "Oh yeah, he's got pictures of it, that's a great one, that's a great place to be." But you know, we all have our roles, we're all different and I'm just so grateful to have worked with so many dedicated people in the finance department. And this lady right here, I know I've got to rack it up, I see her. This lady right here is the best. You'll never find a finer, harder working... Every person that she pays, she thinks they're her family and she treats them like her family and she, she just is, you'll never find anybody better and I'm so grateful to have had the opportunity to work with her.
Thank you. Thank you for the finance department. I know you've put a lot of work in and yes, sometimes it is boring, but we know what you do is important. So thank you and you will be missed.
At this time, I asked Mr. Francis if I can announce that we'll do number nine, the academic growth awards. Jill's going to do that for us and I think Trevor's going to assist her.
So Dr. Bill, Maddie told me she'd been playing golf since she was in second grade. There you go. Chairman Francis for the evening. Yeah, absolutely, members of the board and staff. Just, um, it's an exciting time too to talk about academics. Always I see these athletes, I had so many of them as my kids and I see how they've made their way with athletics and that's helped their academics and those programs go hand in hand and I'm so proud of them. So when they're up here and having a child in high school now, I see the hours they put in, what Coach Chapel was saying, and able to maintain their grades. It is a, it is something. I see why colleges look at that and all kinds of extracurricular band and FFA and everything. So just congratulations to all the kids tonight. Alright, at this time, I wanted to just talk about our schools and our excellent schools who met, met or exceeded growth for the 2018-19 school year. I want you to know it doesn't happen by accident. When schools make growth and I've, you know, I've been there, I've seen that and um, it's, it's rigorous instruction, it's recruiting and retaining teachers, good staff, it's an intense focus on the standards and all those and a lot of other factors go into that. So I want you to know that doesn't go unnoticed. I know there's a lot of hard work there and I appreciate all your dedication and time. So at this time, we're going to recognize them, their communities, their staffs, their admin team and their kids. So Bethel Middle School. River Bend Elementary School. Metabrick Elementary School. I tried to train him well. This is Shannon Hanson, his wife, teacher, who is hanging tonight at Pisgah High School. Do a great job. And Jonathan Valley Elementary. Alright, come get your picture made. And again, my goal before I leave here, retire, I want all of our schools to make growth. They're all capable of doing that. They've all done that, so that is our goal for our kids and our teachers and our staff and I'm so proud of all of our schools and growth is, growth is a number and we're defined by a lot more than that and our kids at times, but congratulations to y'all for this award. Oh, and Brooke didn't get you a frame? No, just kidding, okay, so. Angie got a frame and I thought I should have gotten a frame. We'll get you guys a frame, okay? We ran out, times are tough.
She fell all over our fell. See where the money come from? Finance department.
I just want to say that this is the season to be thankful and I am truly thankful to be part of this school system. To see the accomplishments that we have just seen tonight is just amazing and I don't know about, you know, what you guys see, but I see that we just made four As. We had the accounting department, the artistic department, the athletic department and the academic department. So, all A's for our school system. All right, next on the agenda, I think we're going to try to get back on track here, is going to be an update on the phone system from Ms. Jackson.
Chairman Francis, members of the board, Dr. Nolte, Dr. Putnam, and Ms. Barker. Tonight, I would like to share our phone system replacement plan with you. Currently, the Instructional Technology Department manages over 1,000 digital and analog phones that connect to three internal servers at the ITC. Service is based on plain old telephone service, or POTS, similar to what is found in most homes. Our current phone system is in the six-to-ten-year age range. Typically, the life expectancy of an enterprise phone system is around five to seven years. So, we've, we've kind of exceeded that life expectancy in most of our sites. In our current position, we are struggling to find replacement parts to repair this aging resource. After several months of research and a two-month-long demo of the product, we propose to upgrade our current phone system to a new voice-over IP system that will not only provide us with internal and external phone access in offices and classrooms, but also integrate with our new intercom system, offering advanced safety features that have not been available in the past. The ForteVoice system is currently offered on North Carolina State Contract 204X. Pricing will include the replacement of 1,040 phones, one phone server, 16 survivability gateways, and installation and support at a total cost of $214,370.70. In the attachment, you can view a cost comparison of additional vendors, as well as the monthly savings, by choosing the SIP service along with a POTS service versus the standard POTS service that we have right now. This will be paid for with our E-Rate carryover that has been budgeted in Fund VIII. Any questions?
Looks like it's a very productive way for us to go, and it will provide a lot of benefits for us in the future doing it this way. All right, at this time, does anybody have any questions on this item? Because it's already been budgeted, so there's no motion needed. Thank you.
We like saving money.
Okay, at this time, it is the point our agenda for open session. Ms. King, did anyone sign up for open session? So, nobody, thank you. Next on the agenda is the minutes for the November 4th, 2019 closed session, and November 7th, 2019 closed and regular session. Do I hear a motion to approve those minutes?
So move.
Mr. Kirkpatrick made the motion, Ms. Barrett made a second. Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. The next item on the, the agenda is our calendar for 2020-21. It is that time already.
It is. So, for your approval, you have the 2020-2021 Haywood County Schools Calendar.
I can motion the calendar be approved as presented.
Okay, the calendar that Ms. Wood has brought to us has been, motion's been made to approve the calendar for 2021. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hanson. Any discussion? There being none, we'll take a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do you have anything you want to add about the calendar or say?
No, this year, the calendar committee, we, we got it done in two meetings, which was quicker than we have in the past few years. So, but yeah, they worked hard on getting this calendar, and it's similar to the one, the current calendar. Just to be clear though, about the weather plan, it is the same as, as this year where the wave days will, we will decide after the weather season is over.
I think that was the biggest confusion on the, the current calendar we have, or last year, is when those days were going to be waved. So, hopefully, people are getting more accustomed to, to that practice, and they'll be more familiar with it. Okay. We also have to approve the Haywood Early College calendar.
For your approval, you have the 2020-2021 Haywood Early College.
Okay, so, board members, you see the calendar presented. Do I hear a motion to approve the 2021 Haywood Early College proposed calendar? Ms. Barrett makes a motion to approve, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Rogers. Any discussion on the matter? Okay, we'll take a vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Wood. Next item on the agenda is Ms. Marr for the Title IV information.
Ms. Chairman Francis, board members, Dr. Nolte, Dr. Putnam, Ms. Barker. Back in July, the board approved the Title IV plan. And so, tonight, I'm just bringing the MOU, Memorandum of Understanding, for those two QPs. It was approved back in July as part of the Title IV plan. But we contracted with them for a to, for a total of 110,000 for both of the QPs at the high schools. So, I just wanted to bring that before you for an approval.
Okay. So, we have for us a motion to approve. Do I hear a motion to approve the Title IV?
Um, aye.
Dr. Rogers made the motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Hanson made a second, any discussion on the matter? There being none, we'll take a vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like so? Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. All right, number, item 18 on the agenda is a resolution to remit civil penalties withheld from the North Carolina Public Schools. Dr. Nolte, you want to say anything about this one?
I'm, I'm sure most of you are very familiar with this. We had fines and forfeiture monies that was collected through the years for public schools that public schools have not received. We have even had some court rulings that indicate that we should receive those funds. And so, many districts across the state are taking the symbolic step of passing a resolution saying to the state, "Would you please give us those funds that were designated for us that have been collected but not received?" So, it's just a symbolic act by many school systems to request funds that are entitled to us.
Ms. Chairman, yeah, at this time, I'd like to make a motion that we do approve this resolution, and hopefully the state will give us our funding one of these days.
We have a motion on the floor from Mr. Rogers, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Hanson made a second. Any discussion on the matter?
This was a, because they had to renew this, and it's, this is the last time it can be renewed. So, we got to really plead with our legislators in our state that they need to start paying this money out to the public schools all across this state, so.
Couple of weeks ago down in Greensboro at the school board conference, this was one of the main things that they were talking about, is getting this renewed, as well as trying to get more of the money sent back to the school systems. All right, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, board, we will forward that after it's signed to the appropriate individuals.
Okay. All right, Dr. Nolte, you're up for the next one on school justice partnership.
Yes, this is a product of raising the age. The courts raised the age for minors to be charged as adults for many offenses. And there has been some work on the judicial side, and most communities, ours included, have formed school justice partnerships. A number of us are members of the local partnership, myself, Chairman Francis, our attorney, Mr. Smathers, three of our principals, couple judges, representatives from all the law enforcement agencies and mental health. The first few agreements that came out were a little restrictive. And we have looked at and adopted a model that some other school systems have used that essentially says we will work with other agencies in, in these areas, anticipating fewer youth to be charged as adults. We will not relinquish any of our authority to assign discipline to students. But it is a, an agreement that we would like for you all to consider approving the language. And then, when the local school justice partnership meets again, probably sometime in February, we would all feel comfortable signing it along with law enforcement and the judicial folks. So, we bring this to you for your consideration.
The board, we have before us consideration for the school justice partnership. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Barrett made the motion to approve, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rogers. Any discussion, any questions on what has been presented? There being none, we'll take a vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like so? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, board, you, Dr. Nolte. Next item on the agenda is our policies. Dr. Putnam.
Ms. Chairman, members of the board, looking at policies. Looks like there's a good many, but the, the changes are minor. So, I'm going to go through these as quickly as possible, the ones for first read. I know Mr. Kirkpatrick will be extremely.
We want you to read word for word, everyone.
Read word for word, everyone. I'm a little disappointed Ms. Gardner left. I had to listen to her financial report, she could listen. She's still here, she's. There she is, there she is.
So, let's, yeah, just go ahead and start.
All right. These policies that I'm getting ready to read through are reference updates only. It's Policy 1200, adds reference to new crowdfunding policy. 1400 adds reference to new crowdfunding policy. 1500 adds reference to new policy on use of unmanned aircraft. 1700 adds reference to new crowdfunding policy. 3102 updates the legal references. 42407312 updates the legal references. And 42706145 updates the Other Resources Section reference only. Any question about those?
Okay. Per our school board policy, we will table these for a first reading for 30 days for public input, and then we will address them at our next board meeting. So, the policy's up for second reading.
Actually, continuing.
Were we through on the board? I'm sorry, I thought you were through with those.
No, I'm breaking them up into sections, I'm sorry.
I misunderstood you, I apologize.
Policies with other changes. 1310-4002 in Section B adds a new parental notification requirement when children are offered advanced learning opportunities in mathematics or are placed in advanced mathematic courses. 2010 adds that the superintendent must report all information required to be reported to the board by law. 2300 revises Section C to clarify the circumstances under which an emergency meeting may be called. 4040-7310 makes the policy applicable to volunteers, adds reference to Policy 5015, school volunteers in the cross-references, and updates the legal references. 4325 adds new introductory provision describing the applicability of the policy. Just making sure. 5015 makes the requirements of Policy 4040, 7310, staff-student relations explicitly applicable to school volunteer, adds cross-reference to policy, updates legal references. We move to 7241. In Section A, it revises the applicability of the policy to limit it to drivers who are subject to the drug alcohol testing requirements of 49 CFR. And Section B adds a prohibited act for employees subject to the policy, clarifies the meaning of a non-Schedule I drug or substance, revises Section D to reflect new federal law containing certain, requiring certain employers, including school system, to query the new drug and alcohol clearinghouse. So, all of our drivers are now going to have to be entered into the clearinghouse. This is a federal regulation change for us. It's not something that Haywood County is engaged in or the state. It's required of us by federal law. So, we learned of this about a month ago, and we have till January 6th, 2020 to comply. So, it's a little bit of a quick turnaround. And then, from there, 1510, 427270, 1720, 4015, 7225, and 4333, those were all already up for first read. I would like to move those to second read. They've been up twice for first read. These are applicable to our See Something, Say Something Anonymous reporting system. And we deliberately tabled them a second time for first read because we were not ready for them to take effect. We didn't want to enact a policy for a system we were not yet ready for.
That, that system is where it needs to be for us to?
We have, we have set our training dates, we had to set our training dates. And all students will be trained January 17th, I believe it is. And at that point in time, once our students have been trained, the system will go live. And we'll begin receiving anonymous tips.
So, we need to move those to the second reading.
If we can, yeah, Ms. Chairman, because I, like I said, they've been up before. I don't know if we need to waive it and say that we will go ahead and move these policies to the second reading. I'm going to make a motion that we move these three policies to the second reading to be approved.
We have a motion on the floor to move these three policies to second reading, since they have been tabled, I think, a couple of times previously.
Actually, I may have advised you incorrectly, they can reside right where they are because we want to approve them second read in January.
Okay.
We need them to become active.
But if we have them now, we'd be ready to go ahead and activate them then, if we, we can do that, but.
You can.
That's why I was, well, they'd already be done, because in case something happened, snow or something like that, we did get to meet before January 17th, the deadline, but.
Okay.
Just in case.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to move them to second read.
You got to waive the first.
To waive the first read, since they've been up before. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kirkpatrick. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries, so those can be moved to second read.
Okay.
Get those implemented.
And then, for second read, 4334, 5035, 7345, use of unmanned aircraft, drones, and 4700 student records.
I'll make a motion that we approve the three that we moved, and then the two that he just said.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor to approve the two policies, or the, what's been brought to us for second reading, as well as the three policies we brought forward from the first reading. Do I hear a second to that motion? Ms. Barrett made a second. Any discussions? There being none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Putnam. Sorry for the confusion, there was, there was a lot there, so.
There will be a lot more too, it's just.
That's why you keep. Thank you for the work. This is, this is a hard job, so. This with the building and grounds, I don't see how you're getting any sleep from what all I've seen you do. So, thank you for, for the hard work.
That's why you keep it short and sweet, so nobody gets confused about.
It does take a lot for me to get confused, so. All right. At this time, we have number 21, Request for the Board's Approval to Increase Pay Steps in accordance to, with documented years of service in the state retirement system. Dr. Nolte.
Yeah, board, as a reminder, we have talked about this off and on for the last year and a half. We gave you a really good review. year and a half. We gave you a, uh, really good review during the November work session and what we, uh, would, uh, request your approval to do is to honor, uh, time, step time for individuals who have time in the state retirement system. What that does, that helps us compete with neighboring counties. If we're able to, uh, get an employee, in particular a classified employee to come from a neighboring county and they have, uh, eight years in the retirement system, we would honor that, uh, rather than starting them back at a lower step here. So we reviewed that, uh, during the work session and would ask for your approval for that at this time.
Make a motion we approve.
We have a motion on the floor to approve. Do we, uh, here, say, by Mr. Henson and then second by Ms. Barrett. Any discussion? Now, this, this is not just for prior, our, our current employees. This is going to help us in future employees as well.
The reason, uh, yes, and I'm glad you said that, for public consumption. The reason that we put this in a, in, uh, this format rather than listing all the employees and bringing it with personnel is we would like for this rule to carry forward to future employees when we hire next month, next year, five years from now, that if someone already has a number of years in the state retirement system, that we honor that on their pay step here. It will help us, I think, um, keep people who aren't on the correct step here and there are a few of those and it would certainly help us recruit people who might want to work here and don't want to lose, uh, pay steps because they have, uh, moved counties.
Okay. Uh, motions on the floor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Dr. Nolte. All right, at this time, we had an agenda adjustment, uh, for building and grounds. So Dr. Rogers?
Ms. Chairman, uh, we have several motions to make for building and grounds. First one is to award the Pisgah High School intensive intervention classroom remodel for ar- architecture and engineering services to Markless Architecture, P L L C, and John Bergen is the contractor.
Okay, we have, uh, you're putting that in the form of a motion. So we have a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rogers. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Second motion is to, uh, declare surplus four hundred and twenty-one I T C access points. If you wonder what that is, it's there. There's a good example. Uh, of which fifty would be designated to the county to be used in their county broadband access project. That'd be the second motion.
Okay. Uh, so do we need to do them separately or you want, or this, okay, this is the second motion. Do, do I hear a second to the motion presented on the floor? Mr. Clark? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion passes.
Our next motion is to award Mark Lesk Architecture, P L L C, architect and, uh, engineering services for the Central Haywood High School, uh, science lab project at a cost of twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, second by Mr. Kirkpatrick. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Next is a motion to, um, award the bid to replace the cafeteria serving line at Tusco High School to Thompson and Little at a cost of forty-two thousand nine hundred eighty-eight dollars and thirty-four cents. Uh, this cost to be paid out of, or using fund for.
I'll second that also.
Motion on the floor with a second by Mr. Kirkpatrick as well. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Ms. Chairman, from time to time, it's necessary to surplus transportation assets. For example, uh, cars, trucks, vans, buses, et cetera. Uh, when this occurs, we feel it's necessary to set a minimum bid. So we're bringing forward a motion to set a minimum bid at scrap value of the vehicle or item to be, uh, uh, surplused. If the bid does not exceed scrap metal value, then the item will be removed from the surplus list and scrapped accordingly.
Okay.
I second that.
Motion on the floor by Mr. Dr. Rogers, second by Mr. Kirkpatrick. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
And finally, uh, Ms. Chairman, I'd like to take just a moment to recognize, uh, Dr. Putnam for a statement, uh, regarding the Pisgah High School softball field.
Okay. Dr. Putnam?
Uh, in working with the town of Canton, um, it's my understanding that they have reached consensus to convey the Pisgah softball field to the Haywood County school system. Um, w- we are simply awaiting contractual agreement and signatures, all the legalities that need to convey. And, uh, I would just like to say, uh, a big thank you to, uh, Mr. Smathers, Mr. Pat Smathers and Mr. Zeb Smathers, Mayor Zeb Smathers, uh, for their work and cooperation in this. Um, there is a revision or a reversion clause in the contract, uh, in the deed language, I should say, uh, that if we ever, once it is officially conveyed to the Haywood County school system, if we ever deemed, uh, that we do not need to use the, the property or see no longer use of it, it will revert back to the town of Canton. So, uh, we're very grateful for that ongoing relationship with the town of Canton and very grateful for, uh, their generosity. Uh, it, it's ironic that it happens in this month of December, so we're very grateful for, uh, the many that contributed to that as well as the town manager, uh, Jason Burrell, who's worked with me, uh, several days and nights and hours. So I appreciate him as well. If I've left anybody out, I apologize. But a lot of folks have been working on this as well as our building and grounds for the vision and, uh, foresight to see the need to put, uh, lights at that facility. So, thank you.
I would like to say, I, uh, no, even though it pains me to say this, but thank you, Mr. Pat Smathers.
I know that person.
But I think it's something that needs to be done. I mean, it needs to be turned over so we can start working on trying to get lights down there. Cause that's what, that side of the county, when it comes to the softball program, needs lights so they can play, their varsity can play at night and JV can play full games. So, and we'll start working on that as soon as the pay percent.
All right.
I think he's trying to say y'all been in the dark long enough on that end again. That's often building and grounds.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Rogers. I appreciate all the stuff that you've done on the building and grounds. We appreciate very much. All right. Next we have Mr. Clark, um, for the financial reports.
Uh, earlier tonight, the, uh, finance committee reviewed the monthly finance reports and everything looks good. Uh, bring a motion to accept them as presented by Angie Garner.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor to accept the regular financial monthly reports.
Second.
And Mr. Kirkpatrick with a second. Any discussion? There being none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Dr. Nolte, personnel.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Chairman Francis, members of the board. I bring to you at this time the, uh, personnel for your information and for approval, uh, that we reviewed, uh, during closed session. Uh, for your information, under separation from employment, we have, uh, twenty individuals and under employee status change, we have three. And under leave of absence, we have three. Uh, for your approval, under employment, uh, thirteen, employee status change, twenty-five, leave of absence, one, substitutes, four, employee coaches, five, non-employee coaches, three, and volunteer coaching services, eight. And I, I believe that's it. I, I always get a little nervous when I'm reading that number. Sometimes y'all catch me if I miss something.
Make a motion we approve, uh, personnel as presented.
Mr. Kirkpatrick made a motion to approve personnel. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rogers. Any discussion? There being none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And Dr. Nolte, I think you.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd, I'd ask, uh, uh, Mr. Francis, uh, serving as chairman tonight, if, uh, uh, you all would allow me to recognize, uh, Belinda Marr and let her say a word or two. As, as you all, uh, learned during, uh, closed session, she has decided to, uh, enjoy her state retirement money that she has contributed and to embark on a new adventure. Uh, we held a little luncheon. Come on up, Melinda. Uh, you have to say something now. Uh, we enjoyed a luncheon with her earlier and, uh, had an opportunity to say nice things to her. Uh, the thing that I admire most about Belinda is she literally has done everything. Um, from, uh, serving as a student bus driver way back when, when we were young, um, and, uh, moved through the ranks, uh, teacher, lead teacher, assistant principal, principal, uh, central office, federal programs director. Uh, you have served us well and you will be dearly missed.
Vice Chairman Francis, board, Dr. Nolte, Dr. Putnam, Ms. Barker, I'd just like to take a moment to thank all of you for the opportunity to spend the last thirty-four years as an employee of Haywood County Schools. I feel so blessed to have been part of what I consider to be the best school district. I would not be where I am today without the support mentors and awesome teachers that taught me. I was so blessed to have so many role models. They helped shape me into the person and worker I am today. I'm going to miss working with Haywood County Schools. It's been my life and all I've known. Thank you so much for everything you've done for me.
We wish you the very best in your new career, so.
New career in retirement?
In retirement, yeah.
Well, uh, yeah. And I, I say very few words when it comes to, when it comes to things, but now I've, I've known Belinda a long time and, uh, she could probably tell some stories. But, I mean, her and Ms. Gardner, they've come a long way to get to their point in their life and now Yuns are retiring and congratulations. I mean, Yuns will be dearly missed for what Yuns has done. And thank you again.
Any other thing that needs to come before the board?
Sure. By a very merry Christmas and thank y'all.
Merry Christmas. Meeting adjourned.